For one minute, for one minute.
Live in one minute.
We're ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, we're live.
I'll be city council for October 3rd, 2016 to order if you please stand council of Forrest will lead us in the place for allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the law of the United States of America and as a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please. This time we'll have an invocation by Pastor Timothy Fortune from Horizon Church. Pastor Fortune, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, we bless you and thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for this great community that we live in, Father, from wonderful leaders, Lord, who fight to have us, to keep this community going in the right direction it should go. We ask you to give them wisdom tonight, Father. We ask you to lead them and direct them, Father. We pray that you give them the understanding that they need to keep this community going in the right place it needs to go. And Father, we thank you for all that you're doing. We bless you and give you glory in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce our city council with my far right Forrest Fleming, city council, relieving now, our city attorney Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Tonight we have Sanja Marston, the assistant city manager, sitting in for Sally Sandy, councilman Sid Simmons, and Mayor Prossian John Cantrell, our recording secretary Carolyn Richardson, and Becky Breakley is our interpreter for the deaf community who had to be moved because of some technical difficulties. So Becky, thank you so much for being here. Under public advocacy and issues and strategies or upcoming events, Karma Fame is going to be Karma the Musical, October the 6th at 7:30. Shanghai Nights will be on October the 20th at 7:30. Farmer's Market are on Saturdays between behind the Old Depot and Farmer's Market to Wednesday on North Green Street. At this point, I call on Boris Brad Boris to give us a water tank update please. Thank you Brad.
Hello, everybody. Just wanted to give everybody an update on our water tank projects. One of the primary goals of Water Resources Department is to provide the highest quality water that we can to our customers. And part of that strategy is to maintain our infrastructure. Three years ago, we started our water tank maintenance program and we addressed the six most critical tanks that we had in our system. Well, now it's time to do the five remaining tanks. We started a couple of weeks ago and we're going to continue for the next few weeks and we're going to address some of the other tanks in the system, two of them being our two biggest tanks, the Bowdies Avenue Tank and the Dale Circle Tank. I have a couple of pictures here that I'd like for you to take a look at.
And Brad, are these going to be available at home? Probably not because of the technical difficulty, is that correct?
Um, it probably won't. Let's see if.
And, um.
Well. May need to get Chad in here.
He's coming. And we know this man is here to hear about the water tank update, so we're excited and we want to make sure we hear this presentation. There we go.
Okay, great. This is the Lake James Tank and it was in fairly good shape. It just needed a good exterior renovation. So a few weeks back, we drained the tank, had all the sediment, all the interior structures inspected and upgraded, and we also did an exterior renovation as well. All of our tanks are going to be interior and exterior renovations over the next three years. There's the after, looks really nice. The coating is AWWA standard Delft Blue. It's very recognizable in the community. I've talked to a lot of the homeowners and the business owners up in that area and they really like the improved appearance of the tank. Bowdies Avenue Tank, it's our biggest tank, one and a half million gallons of water. It's really, I wouldn't say an eyesore, but I know I've heard a lot of comments of people in the community say the way that it looks, it needs to have a little bit of an upgraded appearance. So that was one of the things that we really wanted to spend a lot of time on. They are currently renovating that. We drained the tank today and they are starting to paint the risers and they're going to be moving up onto the bowl section over the next several days. And there was a picture just this afternoon, our crews were out taking some pictures and they shot that one. So you can see that all of the mold and mildew off the bottom of the tank has been removed and a two-part epoxy coating is being applied as we speak. So we're really proud. A lot of the staff has been out and looking at all of the other tanks, valuing them off, making sure that they are ready to go when the contractors move out to the other areas. The Salem Tank, Glen Alpine Tank, those tanks are going to be on the list next. Probably in the next two weeks, they'll be moving over to the Dale Circle Tank. I know there's a lot of construction in that area and we really appreciate the patience of any customers or people that are in those areas. If they see any of the contractors working on the tank, they are there for good purposes. And if you have or experienced any problems with any of this tank work, please feel free to give the Water Resources Department a call. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Brad, please? Brad, thanks so much. Next on the agenda is the Marvin Collins Award presentation. The city of Morganton has been honored by the North Carolina Chapter of America Planning Association, which is an association of 1,400 professionals working in North Carolina to create great places throughout North Carolina. The Marvin Collins Award is given annually for agencies and individuals that have completed outstanding plans and programs and projects. We received one thanks to our P&amp;Z program with our new zoning ordinance. I want to ask Bill Lennon and I think Hank Dickens are here to receive such an award. I'll ask Councilman John Cantrell if he'll make that presentation. Bill, Hank, go forward and make any comments you'd like to make, please.
You can't see White.
And White's board, please.
Thanks. I'll let you both then.
All right.
I think most of you don't always know what's going on with planning and zoning, but this is one of the hardest working. You're just like my wife. These guys work untold hours volunteering for the Planning and Zoning Commission and they do a great job and that's one of the reasons we received this award.
Mayor, council members, I'd like to make a few remarks. This effort started in the fall of 2014 and our planning meetings lasted through 2015, culminating with implementation of this ordinance in 2016. I think the recognition of the city and the efforts of our commission, more so the Development Design Department, this is truly a recognition of the efforts of Lee Anderson and his leadership during that period. So we're pleased to have this award for the city.
Thank you so much, Hank. We are pleased that Lee Anderson worked long and hard about this. We hate that he retired, but it's sort of a culmination of all the hard work he had along with the members of planning and zoning. So thank you so much. Next is a resolution for Public Power Week and I'll read that resolution. Whereas public power is crucial component in Morganton, North Carolina, contributing to the overall health of the community by providing reliable electricity, excellent local service, and prompt restoration. And whereas Morganton is more, is one of more than 70 public power communities across North Carolina and over 2,000 public power cities and towns across the United States. And whereas Morganton Utility employees are dedicated to serving the community with reliable electric service and customer care. And whereas Morganton is focused on its customers and neighbors and provides a voice to everyone who lives in the community. And whereas North Carolina's public power utilities are valuable community assets that contribute to the well-being of the community and provide economic development opportunities. Now therefore, bid resolved that the week of October 2nd through 8th, 2016, is a week to promote and celebrate the city of Morganton as a public power community. And then further resolved that the city of Morganton will join all other public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power adopted this third day of October 2016. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor Sally Sandy, City Clerk. I'm going to ask Forrest if he will present the public power resolution. To Brooks, there you are. I didn't see Brooks.
Let me say Brooks, that we're very appreciative of all of the hard work that you and your department does to ensure that we have the power on a continual basis. And I think everyone that lives in the city of Morganton would have to agree that there are very few times when we don't have power, if the power's not on. And if it does go off for some reason such as a storm or whatever, that in a very short period of time, all of your guys will have it back on. So we appreciate you and congratulations on this public power week. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
I just want to say thank you to the city council, the mayor, and the city staff. I couldn't have done it without the help of the rest of the departments. We all work together as a team. In recognition of that, we have a table set up out in the lobby here this week for the citizens of Morganton. Come by, have refreshments and some gifts we like to give out free. Also drawings for energy supply kits, unitary reduction kits. Our goal is to keep the power on and keep it as low a cost as possible. And God forbid squirrels and trees will do that.
Next on the agenda is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the city of Morganton is committed to ensure the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas nearly 3,000 people die each year as a result of home fires. And whereas unattended cooking appliances are the leading cause of home structure fires and associated injuries, and the third leading cause of home fire deaths. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires in half. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association recommends at least one smoke alarm on every level of the home, including the basement, outside sleeping areas, and in all bedrooms. And whereas automatic fire sprinkler systems cut the risk of dying in a home fire by about 80 percent. Whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, quote, "Don't wait, check the date, replace smoke alarms every 10 years," end quote, effectively services to remind us all of the simple actions we can take to keep our homes and families safe from fire between the Fire Prevention Week and year round. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the city of Morganton, to hear about the plan of October as Fire Prevention Month throughout the city. And I urge all men, all people of Morganton to protect their homes and families by heeding the important message of the Fire Prevention Month 2016. Witness Ronnie Thompson, Mayor Sally Sandy, Clerk. I'll ask Sid Simmons if he'll make that presentation. Captain Campbell?
Captain, we appreciate your department. We appreciate the firefighters and we really appreciate getting our fire tax rate toward it.
Captain Campbell, do you want to say something?
Yes, sir. Just want to take the opportunity to thank you, Mayor, and council members for your continued support for fire services. We're going to be out this month doing a lot of site visits with daycares, churches, and schools. So we're going to be very busy this month getting the word out on fire prevention and fire protection. And if you've got any questions, it means please contact me. I'm always available.
Thank you, Captain Campbell. Next on the agenda is a proclamation for Cyber Security Awareness Month. Whereas we recognize the vital role that technology has in all our daily lives and in the future of our nation. Whereby today, many citizens, schools, libraries, businesses, and other organizations use the Internet for a variety of tasks, including keeping in contact with family and friends, managing personal finances, performing research, enhancing education, and conducting business. And whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems. And whereas the use of the Internet at the primary and secondary school levels in the city of Morganton enhances the education of youth by providing them access to online education and research materials. And at institutions of higher education, the use of information technology is integral to teaching and learning, research and outreach, and service. And whereas Internet users and our information infrastructure face an increasing threat of malicious cyber attack, significant financial and personal privacy losses due to the identity theft and fraud. And whereas maintaining the security of cyber space is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of the city of Morganton, information, infrastructure, and economy. And whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, the National Association of State Information Officers, and the National Security Cyber Security Alliance have declared October as National Cyber Security Awareness Month. And all citizens are encouraged to visit these sites along with the city of Morganton website and stop, think, and connect to learn about cyber security and put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses. Now I therefore, Ronnie Thompson, to hear my proclaim the month of October as Cyber Security Awareness Month. This third day of October, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor Sally Sandy, Clerk. I'll ask the great branch to come forward.
Just want to reiterate what he just said with security awareness and everybody is a consumer of technology this day and age. And like I said, the national, this is National Security Awareness Month. And just want you to stop, think, before you connect. We have, we do security awareness training for our employees and we do the stop, look, think. And if you just take just a few minutes to stop and think before you do a lot of things, you'll act differently. People have so much that they put online, that they do online, they do it smartphones, they do it tablets. All your information is easily and readily available. So if you'll go to our website, we have a link off of it that goes to the StopThinkConnect.org or the StaysafeOnline.org. And there's a lot of good information out there that everybody, not just employees or school kids, but parents, everybody is a consumer of this stuff now. So take advantage of this information, read it, and hopefully it'll help you.
Thank you, Brad. Next on the agenda will be our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, could I make the comment?
Yes, you may, Captain.
I think when I spoke to honor Captain Campbell, I said our fire tax rate. I meant to say our insurance rate.
So noted in the minutes. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency. Sanja, do we have anything to report?
The elections will be held in November for new board, board director members. And the nominees are Barry Hayes, who is the mayor of Granite Falls, and Jim Gallagher, who is a councilman from Gastonia. And we plan to support both of those.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda. We have six items. Sanja, if you'll bring us up to date on those six items.
We ask that you approve all of these items in one motion unless there's an item that someone would like to remove and discuss separately. For those of you viewing at home, those items are approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on September 12th, 2016. Tax releases in the amount of $150.31. Reappointment of Jeanne McNilly as the tax collector and a resolution adopting an order directing the tax collector to collect taxes. The award of purchase and financing of four budgeted trucks, which all came in under budget, I might add. In Public Works, there would be a sweeper in the amount of $258,925 and a rear loader in the amount of $177,929.39. In the electric department, there would be a service truck in the amount of $119,721 and a line truck in the amount of $228,707. The financing would be for four years at an interest rate of 1.352 percent. Approval of a contract with the P&amp;A group for the flexible spending account administration. And reclassification of a service technician position in compass cable to a network engineer.
Do any council members wish to remove any item? I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. You have a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify the saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. Under new business, we have consideration of a grant, award of entitlement funds to nonprofits. Sanja?
Lisa Helton from the Western Piedmont Council on Government is here to announce those awards.
Dr. Lisa.
Good evening. This is part of our 2016 action plan. Here we have some money set aside for our local nonprofits. We had six applications this year and Seth would like to recommend three of those. The Outreach Center, award of $10,515. The Meeting Place One, award of $7,085. And Burke County Christian Ministries, award of $5,000.
Thank you, Lisa. What's the wish of the council?
I move to award the fiscal year 2016 entitlement funds to nonprofits as recommended.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor please signify the saying aye. Motion passes. Next is our consideration of a public hearing to permanently close and abandon unopened portions of Murphy Street, McIntyre Avenue, and unnamed street between Murphy Street and Carbondale Lane. I'll ask council to bring us up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has received a petition from Mr. Omichael Jarrett for the closing of several connected sections of unopened street. This is in the area off Carbon City Road that stretches down Murphy Street and Carbondale Lane. I think there's a map in your material, are perpendicular to Carbon City and they kind of go down the hill towards Silver Creek. Murphy and Murphy Street is open and paved for part of that way, but beyond the Jarrett property line, it's not an open street, never has been, and is unpaved and developed. Then there is a side street off of that back toward Carbondale that has never been opened or maintained by the city, but which is used as a drive by the Jarrett family who owns several properties. And then there is an unnamed street that appears to be part of McIntyre Avenue. And then there's an unnamed street further down that has never been opened or appears to just be trees and grass that also extends from Murphy to, would extend from Murphy to Carbondale. The neighboring property owners, in addition to the Jarretts, have all signed, and I believe they're in your packet, consents to this action. And the engineering and planning departments have no objection to it. Therefore, if you wish to consider this, you would call for a public hearing at the next city council meeting.
What's the wish of the council?
I move to adopt a resolution of intent to permanently close and abandon unopened portions of Murphy Street, McIntyre Avenue, and an unnamed street connecting Murphy Street and Carbondale Lane and to set up public hearing for Monday, November 7th, 2016, at 6:15 PM in the city hall council chamber to consider this motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor signify the saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is consideration of the community house renovation project phase two. Sanja, I would like to ask Sharon to make that presentation. Sharon, please.
As you know, in 2012, the main street director became over the community house and it is a source of pride for me. I wanted to see it be a much larger part of this community. It's always been a large part of this community, but I know that it can do so much more. In 13 and 14, you were kind enough to, with the help of the Renew the Tradition Committee and the pilot club, together as a partner, we did the first phase of renovations, redoing the kitchen and the basement to the kitchen. And then of course, the infrastructure and the HVAC, the electric and the water, in an effort with hopes that the day would come and that we would be here to ask you for a second and what I of course, hope to be a final phase. I think everybody can appreciate the fact that we have certainly changed the image, if you will, for the community house. We reach out to everyone from who is three years old, if you will, or really birth, to in their 80s and 90s. We have a lot of 16-year-old birthday parties. We do a lot with the Marine Corps. As I said to you in the workshop, we served over 21,000 people last year. This time, we are before you to ask for, to borrow the money. The Renew the Tradition will commit another 150,000, but we realize at this point that it is out of a reach in the community to ask for the funding. We, I treat this, my team treats this like a business. We have looked at our market competition. We have looked at our market opportunities. We know that there's a lot here. And as I was reminded even more so the other day by Marcia Riddle, the fact this is a community house is truly for this community. While we certainly go after a lot of folks in and outside, I mean, outside of Burke County, we still are really here for our locals and that's what it's here for. I am proud to say that our group has increased our sales by 14% since we've, in 2012, and that we have decreased our food costs and our, what was the other thing? And even our utilities because of course, we bettered our equipment and so forth. So at the bottom line is, as someone mentioned tonight, the elevator is one thing, but it is worn out, it's tired. We do not meet many of the handicap accessibilities, even in terms of the restroom. The basement, in my opinion, is 3,000 square foot of unused, non-income producing place. Right now, it is a storage, really, it's just a landing pad for anybody that wants to put something down there. And as I mentioned again in the workshop, the two additional rooms, if it's only used once a week with a $10 meal, no extras, no rent, would provide 202,000, excuse me, $405,000 at the end of 15 years, which is double what the actual cost is at the moment. Of course, what we're before you asking tonight is that we would like to do the total renovated area, which would be 11,263 square feet. And that comes out to a square foot price of $126.69. The second one that we did put in there for you to consider was the The second one that we did put in there for you to consider was the renovation, and I'll explain the renovation, I apologize. This would include the lobby, the calling room, the flooring, and also, you know, the barrel room in the calling room improvement, one of our biggest complaints is sound in there, and so they have found a product that will fix that sounding in there. Also, new lobby, new bathrooms, big thing, new bathrooms. A bridal suite at the Pilot Club, that was their big push, was a bridal suite slash green room. The elevator, the cob room would have what I call coffered ceilings, if you will, where they go up with chandeliers, again, a new flooring. Downstairs would have, you could go by the elevator, would have two rooms, one for like a board meeting, the second one could hold up to 40 people. Both will still be expandable areas with some minor service to each room down there, such as a water and a, you know, like a bar area for a coffee station and that type of thing. Also, two restrooms down there. I feel very strongly that this is another piece, it's kind of like the puzzles were with the Mabose Theater, the Marquee Cinemas, this here at the old, I've gone blank on it, but city hall, yes, Premier, thank you, could not think of Premier to save my life, at the Premier Alley. You know, the Morganton Community House is another piece in the downtown puzzle. We have people come in, those people, and my group knows to encourage them to do so much there, and then to also to support our businesses downtown. So, we feel like this is a win-win situation, and the audience here, most of them are here tonight to support the community house. So, I'd like to continue to make you proud about it. I know my team would too. And if you have any questions?
Sharon, the big time is 15 years, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
At 30% interest?
Yes, sir.
And option one will be $1,396,134,45.
That is correct.
Okay. I'd like to hear from the Pilot Club or Renew the Tradition. Could we have a spokesman come up, please?
Absolutely. Jan, please have him come on. Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, and on behalf of the Pilot Club of Morganton, we have a lot of our members here tonight, the Renew the Tradition Committee, and then many members here also, as well as the city of citizens of Morganton and the citizens of Burke County. I wanted to thank the city council and our mayor for your ongoing support for the last four years and two months, as I told you last week. Without your support, phase one would have never been completed or even have happened. So, thank you once again for doing that for us. We are hoping now that we can complete phase two, which would be the completion of the renovation of our beautiful historic downtown community house. And I know you would like to see it completed after going to hearing us come and talk to you for the last four years. So, I'm hoping, as well as all of us, that you will continue to support us, and this final phase can be completed within the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get a motion on the floor. Would somebody else make a motion?
I move we approve the bidding on phase two renovations of the Morganton community house as described in option one, which is the renovation upstairs and downstairs.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I think it would be very appropriate to point out that this project would be placed in the capital budget and would not result in a tax increase, overall tax increase, to do this, to be placed in the capital budget, in next year's capital budget.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, I've talked to several people this week, several of whom are out in the audience tonight, and it seems that I have been labeled as being opposed. And I just want to set the record straight. I am not opposed to renovating the community house. I think we need to think about long and hard where we can come up with the money without raising the property tax.
Tom, would you like to add anything?
Just as Sid said, we have to take a long and hard look, but we know what the payments will be over this 15-year period, and that's part of the budgeting process that we will go through each year. And we will keep spending within our tax rate, and I think it's money well spent. And as has been said before, this is part of our community, and it's something that adds to the lifestyle and of our citizens, and not just our citizens, but it adds a lot to our town.
Thank you, John. I would like to say all members of the city council have support of the community house. I think everyone we've taken on this is unanimous. So, without further ado, all in favor of this motion to use option one to renovate the upstairs and downstairs, please signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. We need a second motion, please, to make an application. I believe you will notice this. I'll make that motion to authorize staff to make application to the local government commission to finance the project using installment purchase proceeds as allowed in general statute 106A-20. You have a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify the saying aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda, two more items, I believe, the consideration of the home to boards and commissions. Sanja?
On the Board of Adjustments, you have three applications. Patricia Williams has resigned, and you need to appoint someone in her place, and you have three applications, Susan Chellor, Richard Garrison, and Mark Barrier.
May I note that the term in question, her term expires next June, so this is at the moment just filling the term that ends next year.
So, agenda says 2019, is it 2017?
It's 2017.
2017.
Yeah, that's an error.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move we appoint Susan Chellor to the vacancy in the Board of Adjustment.
Do, have a second.
Thank you.
Do I have any other nominations? All in favor of the motion, please signify the saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. And I think the last thing is vacancy. Sanja, on the Human Relations Commission?
Yes, on the Human Relations Commission, we have an opening for a student representative to be appointed at the beginning of the new school year, and it has been recommended that Marianna Batron from Freedom High School be appointed to the Human Relations Commission.
Have a motion?
This is a male.
I will appoint her to the Human Relations Council. I always get them confused. Okay. Any further discussion? I encourage people to enjoy Public Power Week. We are adjourned.